Package together, so we're ready to advertise here and it's still gonna be probably about eight weeks before we want to think about doing that, but we're getting closer. Click that path, still working on the design on that and we have our permit request into Washita. We're just waiting for them to get our ADA ramp in connection to the community center and click that. The guys are also working on the courthouse parking lots, getting those ready for next spring construction after we move. Maintenance side, crews are still working on Estev Road in this area, grading roads out east and hot mix patching Pickleton Highway and they'll be doing that for a while. West End, crews are sweeping the remaining chip seal roads so they can stripe them and patching in Halling Rock and Lyle Snowdon Road. On the facility side, the new building's moving ahead. The electrician who is behind is actually working Saturdays and Sundays to catch up. So there, it's just much easier for them to work when things aren't all sealed up by the with the drop ceiling than they have to move stuff around, so they're trying to catch up. Flooring has kind of got on hold. I think they've, they're done with all the areas that aren't getting a lot of heavy foot traffic or weren't happening. And so the rest of that will wait till after the trades are mostly done. Finished carpentry, they're installing more solid surface countertops. And then bathrooms are pretty much all put together, which is good. It's nice to see things that are getting completed. So and then electricians are actually hanging lights in there now. So if you go over there, most of the first floor, there's lights, fixtures. We still don't have power.
Say there's, but there's no.
Yeah, they're a week or two away from getting power. They have.
Next Monday.
Yeah, they're. You know how it works. Soon, but they're, they've been signed off at the building by the electrical inspector. And so it's just a matter of getting the rest of the connections and the transformer set by P U D. So we're, we're really close. Uh, let's see, drywall, they're pretty much the only drywall finishing left and they're really close is in the stairways. I think they tried to leave that for last because the walls get beat up pretty bad. Since that's the only way to get up and down with ladders and materials and stuff. Let's see, mechanical, pretty much they're focusing on the boiler room. It's pretty much a work of art where each piece is unique and fitted in that room. So pretty interesting watching those guys connect everything up. Let's see. We are about 15 million has been paid to the contractor. And so we're between eighty-five and ninety percent finished paying for the, the building. The civil work there, they did the curb and gutter last week. They're forming up the rest of the curb and gutter. They'll be doing sidewalks. They poured the last of the walls in the alley around the building and they still have the gutter to go. They, uh, we had an issue with the drainage, so the, the alley is just packed with utilities and, and it's a challenge. So they had to shallow things up, but I still wanted to get some underground drainage relief. Just because it's, it's close to the building, all those roof drains on the other side drain into that, that valley gutter. And so we have, they finally worked through the details, but they had to change and add another catch basin in our parking lot to shallow things up enough and weave their way through the utilities that are there. So that work will continue and, but it slowed things down. We also, I think I mentioned that we ran into a catch basin at the city, right?
Covered up.
Yeah, didn't know they had. So we've worked around that, have a workaround until we do the parking lots next spring and we'll fix that drainage. So it'll be actually, it'll actually be better because we'll have less throwaway. So we'll get a credit from the work they're not doing and then we'll just put it in correctly in the right location when we do our work. And still on schedule. And budget, so those are two good things. And then we're still working on annex five relocation, which will, will start getting things ready after the fair. Start moving forward a little bit more. But we're still kind of held up because people are still in that building before we can relocate it, so. Let's see, and I, uh, let's see courthouse entry, courthouse entry, east entry is open. Uh, south entry has been disassembled and they're gonna reform. Are they reforming now? We were scheduled, we're trying to move it forward because the guy that runs the bash plant is going on vacation, so hopefully he'll get any concrete. Cause ours poor of a schedule for the twenty-third, that is coincide with his vacation, so we're trying to push him to get it done a little sooner. And then we'll pour back the, we'll pour back what we have left to do on the south, which is the, which is the steps and the landing and then we will move over to the north. We're going back and forth a little with the city on what historic monumental means. Uh, cause they would like us to put in a handrail on the other side of the steps, on the east end of the steps. There's one in the middle and the building inspector says, well, I, they, you've changed a little bit from what, if you put it back the way it was, that would be monumental. We said, no, that would be existing. Monumental means large. You don't have, you don't have a railing every five feet on a jump into an arena or something. You just don't. We're considering this the same thing, so we don't, we just want the one down the middle like we have over here. To come in and out. But yeah, that's probably too much information, but that's the story on the courthouse entry. All right, so this week our push for our crews is fair. And so the guys are up there prepping, painting, mowing, getting the displays set in place and all the last minute details that, that we have to do to get ready for next week. So I think they start events though on Friday. So there'll be a lot going on starting this weekend up at the fairgrounds. As far as people being up there and so far the rules haven't changed, so they're moving forward with all the things that they had planned and are able to put together for this year's fair. Let's see, say this past, the radio site up there, archaeologist, I just talked to her. She's on her way up there as we speak to start the walk around. Should take probably today and tomorrow, cause we're doing a little bit larger area than what we have, just in case. So she can get where we're putting all the utilities. That'll be done this week. Pioneer Center, we had another sinkhole, so off and on for the past decade, we've had sinkholes. Because of, I don't know how it was, parking lot was compacted or, you know.
Some of that is the truth.
And then there was a big, one of the water lines, I don't know, it's probably ten years ago, it broke. But, but ended, yeah, we might've been collateral damage that we just didn't know about until this week. So anyway, we're fixing that. Still struggling with all of our cooling units at Pioneer Center and then east district court here is limping along. And we've had, we have extra air conditioning units that were, will move in as we needed. But it's a, a challenge with those units, but they'll, they will be replaced.
Yes, Pioneer Center, we've actually taken the one that cools seniors offline because if we keep that when it freezes up, it floods out its health. So, so they have temporary units, east district has, will have temporary units also planned.
So. Okay, Title twelve standards.
As, as this Thursday, we have another get together.
So that process is still. And then, and River Bridge, maybe a little bit more on that. So the discussion yesterday was talking about putting together some kind of a management team from the owners. Perspective to oversee the design work that's occurring and that's pretty typical. And, cause you, you just can't, you can't manage it, you know, one person, Kevin can't do that. And so that's, I mean, that's what we did for the building, you know, we formed a group within our own public works that that's our focus, Kenny and I and Angie. Just because to oversee design and then as well as construction, and I think that's the idea. That was brought up yesterday and I think that's a great idea. To manage this, you should have that because it's a big complicated project and you need a group of people that can see that through. So I think that was a good, good idea. That's it for our, our list of stuff unless you have something else.
I think that's it.
Where are we at on lease negotiations for the safety?
And they want us to, we want us to get our site picked out now. They want us to get as small a footprint as possible, which I can understand. So they said, okay, well, we gotta get our archaeology survey done and then we have to survey it. And then from there, we'll nail down our site, the exact location. I, the road is where the road's gonna be. I mean, that has been there and so we'll work out some sort of easement, you know, I think for the road, cause I don't, we shouldn't have to lease that property from them. It's, I mean, we're gonna build a section of new road, but, and then we'll keep the footprint as small as we can, but still give the ability to grow and still have the ability that meets all Jeff's needs to. Won't be real small. Once we pay, once we get that out, then we'll sit down and hash through.
Are there any trees growing around there in that, that spot up there? Is there, is it just bare and you don't ever expect trees to grow there?
It's pretty, it's, it's, you know, it's a southwest facing slope, so it's pretty tough environment for trees. The fire went through there, but it was, a lot of it was already logged off. There's, we're not, I don't think we're taking down. Be honest, we're not taking down any trees. There's some trees above it that, but there's, there's not much left of.
Further up that.
Further up as you, as you go way up towards, right up towards the, uh, the property line with the, with, uh, with the reservation, but we won't be up that high.
Okay. So Pioneer Center, we had talked before about our, have we painted one side? We were gonna paint a side each.
Yes, yes, we pay. Yeah, we're not done. We have to finish. We, we got pressure washed, so we have the one side we still have to finish.
Okay.
This year, so we'll go back after the fair.
Okay.
We'll keep chipping away at that.
Yeah, that's what, yes, I was explaining that to my wife, which that's a good, that's a good method.
Yes, yes.
Side a year.
Same color.
Color. Then it doesn't matter. And then I did have, I had contact from a gentleman in Murdoch yesterday. But he's been working with Washita or he has been attempting to work with Washita to, there's several folks down there are interested in having them lower the speed limit as it goes through Murdoch. And I believe that we talked about this like a year ago, that they were doing a study and that they are gonna do something.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what, sounded like, uh, there's some safety improvements I can, I can get with the traffic engineer.
Okay, that would be curious, cause that's, yeah, cause I said, I, I have some recollection that there was something, like we got some notice or something that they were gonna be looking at where it goes through Murdoch, which it is, I mean, it's, there has been quite a bit of buildup. And then their concern too is the folks making the left hand, left hand turns across traffic to the south. Where it's the same, you know, cause the speed limit's fifty-five, I think. And there's people, there's been a lot of houses and stuff on the south side of the road there and people are stopped waiting to turn and.
Yeah, rear enders.
Getting rear ended in there and he had said, you know, he had tried to, he had eventually got to the right person at Washita, but he was just looking for some either information or help as far as to, to, cause I explained and he understood it, it's, you know, we don't have any jurisdiction, it's a state highway. But we could certainly express interest and support if that's, if that's what the community, if the, and I don't know what Washita, cause I said, we have a, have a process we go through when we're evaluating changing speed limits. I assume the same to have a, right, and they will have to go through that, that process. So, and I said, I know there do. Look at, you can only adjust people's behavior so much.
Right.
They just won't do it.
Yeah.
And so I think they try to do it incrementally, cause I said, Lyle has been through a couple, three where it got slower, then they kind of retrained everybody, cause now it's down to thirty miles an hour, which I'm still adapting to. As a, you know, I guess a legacy. A resident, it's like, I remember when it was right, straight through, which was not smart, so.
Yeah.
So yeah, if you can get, just find out whatever you can, if they're doing something or, and if there's anything we can do to maybe help with that process.
Sure. Yeah, I think I have an email that has some, a description and some maps of what they were thinking and I could forward that to you.
Okay.
I'll follow up with them to see if there's a change or what their progress is.
Okay, great. Uh, that's all I had.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep, thank you.
Be careful of that door.
Sometimes the door slams, okay.
Yeah, don't let it hit you on the way out. He likes you.
Fixed.
That is so weird.
Make me look bad.
No, I studied several times this morning.
Yeah.
You know, we had that before where it did that and they came over and they're like, well, it works for us. I think the.
It's picky.
It is picky. The public works folks are like, there's nothing wrong with this door. Good morning, thank you. Thank you for sending us ahead. I love him, man.
Yes.
I got through.
Sorry, I wasn't seeing him.
That's okay.
That's where I'm at right now.
That's all right. That just reminds me of when I was in high school and you did the work. All you had to have your homework done was for first period, cause then in first period you did the work for second period and second did for third.
The first period on the bus.
You did first period on the bus. That's right.
Not the program I want.
I know. Yes, I got better.
Normally.
Yeah.
Okay, good morning, Dan. Get started here, cause there's lots, as you can see. Um, first up, the consent agenda, purpose, sale authorization to advertise, chief of operations position is item number one. And made the decision that cannot sustain the current workload between my staff that's trying to share that for any longer. It's just chewing us up. Instead of wait to advertise and hire for that position until after we're done with the review process and make some final decisions and can update that. Position description, I've gotta get somebody in there. What we've been doing for the last three plus months is not sustainable.
Okay.
So. Um, number two on your consent agenda is contract between GeoCom and K C D. Excellent, thank you. Um, public safety radio system, um, it is at this moment functioning normally. There's been issues throughout the last month since I was here, five weeks. Most significant are a page channel reception issue for Dallasport area, which mostly affected the EMS district ambulance station in Dallasport and that crew. They were the first to report it and then as well as the High Prairie Fire District reported. So I spent the better part of two days and parts of others to figure that out and get it resolved with the technicians. I'm just investigating and narrowing down what the issues were, but I'm happy to report that as one of the few issues that actually have over the last six and a half years affected the user service of the system. We were able to find what was wrong with it and get it fixed and now as Dallasport ambulance crews are reporting, it's better than it's ever been. So, and, and although it took a lot of man hours, uh, which is gonna cost us, it did not, it wasn't anything major and didn't include the replacement of equipment, so. Another one of the issues we had during the lightning storm of last Thursday, August, or yes, August fifth was a power failure at Diamond Gap, which that site went completely offline. Fortunately, again, during that period of time, we had no emergency responder activity in the Glenwood area that it mainly serves and the upper snowden area. I, my, the technician was on his way there and I was about to go. I decided to call fire chief and see if he was willing to go check and I talked him through how to fix the problem and get it back online. So we were down for about forty-five minutes in total versus two and a half.
You just have to power cycle it or?
Uh, yes, it was, uh, the, the breakers to the forty-eight volt DC plant had tripped. We assumed that there was a lightning strike there and that is not our, one of our primary sites. It's shared with Wave Beauty. Wave has management responsibilities. And so it is, is not grounded. The facility is not grounded to our standards. So that might be the cause for the trip in that breaker. I'm addressing that. It's also in the tier three preventative maintenance report from the contracted radio engineer and so I'll be passing that on to wave. I'm glad it's one of me, just me. So, um, anyway.
I think that's safety glass.
I've already engaged wave about that and a couple other. And then moving on to the maintenance side. The flat top security fence does definitely need considerable repairs. I'm trying to find the time to engage either Jeff or Gordy Public Works to see if they're willing to provide me with some support to figure out what we need to put out for bids and the contracting process and project management. It's gonna be more of a repair than ever before and I have less time to deal with it, but it is.
Is there even any point in getting it done since the snow's gonna be here in the night?
Well, that's what we did the last, last winter. I guess it's been two winters now and, and it's getting worse and worse and my intent for this year until things went sideways was to get a different type of fence in place, something that would withstand the abuse that it obviously takes. So like I said, hopefully if I engage public works, we can at least get started on that process to engage with MIT and get bids and so on. For our alternative use and then, yeah, if we don't get to build them up this year. Like I said, I'm, it would not be my intention to rebuild what's there. Anytime this year, and expect it to last through this winter, again, that would be a waste of county funds.
What, what is the current fence?
It's just a chain link, security fence, yeah. I'll try to find the time to keep working on that. The annual radio system preventative maintenance is complete by both tier one and tier three providers. Waiting on those reports during that, those site visits and the reviews of all the equipment. There were a few emergent issues that came up, a couple that were small, uh, three that may or may not be significant. Which is related to the receive capabilities of three different sites in our system. And I'm working through that process to make those emergency repairs. One of those sites is Kizer Ridge Site, the other is Indian Hill Site and those are primary for the areas that they serve, Indian Hill, Indian White Salmon and along the Columbia River through the Lyle. So if they're not receiving well, then that infect affects dispatch's ability to hear field users and so on. At this time, um, the estimates, the quotes that I have, if it is a full replacement of the receive system, sea line antennas and all, which we don't believe it will be. It could be as simple as what we've seen in the past where those connectors that were put on the the broadcast quality friction connectors. If that's all it is, it won't be a significant cost except for it. It takes a mobilization of the tower crew, so you're into it for at least fifteen hundred dollars just for that. If it does include a full replacement of coax and antenna and so on, it's more like in the neighborhood of eighty-four hundred dollars per site. So I'm working on that. And I think that's all of the note. If you have any questions, just let me know, because I'm gonna try and get to this as quickly as possible so we can get to the end. The Department of Operations and Maintenance Funding Stability Project. We've had some time to look into that some more. I met with finance manager and the treasurer last week to discuss that. And looking into those options. And looking into those options, so I encourage to, encouraged to have their help on that and their support. Thank you for that. You outlined some options and pros and cons and there's more data to be collected on what each one of those options would actually mean for the sustainable revenue of the department. And a bright note, both operationally and financially is that the radio tier three consultant made me aware of some changes in equipment and some potential surplus equipment that River County has taken out of our site at Indian Hill location. And if I can work it out with the River County Sheriff's Office and they can surplus that equipment, it will be a significant savings to us to either have for spares or use as equipment in the new Sados Pass site. It is the exact equipment that we use in our radio system.
Are they pulling it out?
Yeah. I'm not going to speculate on why River County is doing it, but I'm going to take the benefit. It's not because the equipment was defective or malfunctioning or otherwise. Wouldn't meet our needs. It is, it's exactly what we use, what we could use and it's somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of equipment.
To buy me.
If you purchase a new, yes, that would be the savings to us. And like I said, either to have a spare that, that we need because a lot of this stuff, as you know, computer-based technology, it's going obsolete. So that will also help our budget for ongoing radio system maintenance. Or to use in the new Sados Pass site and I've already engaged Jeff Hunter as the project manager for the Sados Pass site into what that is and whether they want to work that into their plan with AdCom to use that equipment instead of purchasing. Very happy. Met that opportunity and I hope that River County allows us to have that. As far as radio site lease agreement, still working on the GoGotta site sublease agreement with Benton County. Like I mentioned before, that's going to be just over eleven thousand dollars more a year. Once we sign that agreement. Might even include this year. The Indian Hill site sublease with River County is still ongoing based on their upgrades. And then the wave broadband sublease at Flat Top, I've had no time to work on. The project, Click That Fire Station, like I mentioned before, went very well. There's still some punchless items including alarming and remote start capabilities of the generator there, which is important to us. So that we don't have to make those long trips and pay the technicians to mobilize when something just doesn't act quite right. So we're happy about that. Nice to have it in its own room and HVAC and not out in the dust in the cold. It's going to last longer and function better over the long run. Questions about the radio system or radio project?
We're good, thank you.
Nine-one call taking and public safety radio dispatching function of the department, you can see the call volume reports there. The number of nine-one calls for June was up considerably over prior months. However, then the non-emergent calls into dispatch had declined some. So total calls are still up. What we are seeing is a how do I put this? A greater number of higher level of calls, more emergent calls, more, you know, more calls that are of a serious nature. Things are ramping up out there in our county for some reason. I'm not going to speculate as reasons why, but there's more serious calls, calls that take more time and add more stress to the system to deal with. I'll get into some of that in more detail in a minute. Staffing, we have one communications officer is still in training. If everything goes well, she should be out of training, released to be full-time partner by the end of this month or sooner. I have one full-time communications officer that has resigned effective August twenty-third to take another job that is outside of the shift work, weekends, holidays, all that good stuff to the benefit of her family. She was very gracious in her resignation letter. You know, saying that she appreciated her time here and being on the team, like this is what's best for her family.
How long has she been here?
She started with us, oh, you're going to hurt me now. As a casual communications officer, she worked both part-time with crit fee tribal, intertribal dispatch in the river and us for a couple of years. Then took a full-time position with us. I hate to say for not long, then for family reasons went back to casual and recently came back to full-time. And then obviously was looking for a different job with different hours and found one and accepted it. I couldn't remember if I reported to you before or not, but one full-time communications officer is retiring at the end of December. So in all of this hiring process, because we have one casual position open currently. With your, I don't, I don't think we need it, but I left it on the list for verbal approval to post for a full-time communications officer again, we just have that open and changed it, so reopen that. But if, if things worked out, we can go through that whole vetting process and interview process with, for both casual and full-time at the same time. And hopefully if things worked out and budgets are amenable, hire and get some more than two people into training, two or three people into training so that we can be prepared for the open hole in January from that retirement, so. Along with Casey and Rob, looking into those options as to how we can manage that. Our intern, I guess I should back up. Verbal approval?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Do what you need to do.
Alright. Intern doing very well and is of a great benefit. Had multiple people in my department come and say how good of a job she's doing and everything she's doing is spot on. So thank you for that opportunity. Because that's on, on your budget, but it is especially right now, very helpful. Allowing us to get some things done on the paperwork side that otherwise wouldn't be getting done. Training and operations for nine-one dispatch, security project, camera repair projects been completed. The nine-one grant was executed and it's about fifty-five hundred dollars less than the last grant cycle. So that's disappointing, but that's, we have no choice in that. We are still coordinating with the state nine-one office to make sure that we manage and administer that grant properly. As my administrative assistant myself, I have just the basic knowledge in doing that, that is primarily, if not wholly, the chief of operations responsibilities is that grant management on a regular basis. The new state legislation regarding how law enforcement handles mentally ill and other issues is, is affecting the communications officers, they've let me know that, know in certain terms. We had a community team meeting last week. And I'm, I'm working with law enforcement heads and I'm going to have to work with mental health to figure out how we navigate this new circumstance we find ourselves in, but law enforcement is limited in what they can do, mental health is limited in what they can or are willing to do. And that puts the communications officer in the middle sometimes and making more phone calls and dealing with those folks on the phone longer. Because law enforcement may or may not be responding and trying to get mental health there is a challenge and just calling for mental health services is a long process through their phone tree and wait times and then callbacks and the locals to get involved and so on and so forth. I put out a memo to my staff, you know, encouraging them and telling them that we can get through this, but right now our job has not changed, we have to provide the service. And then until law enforcement asks for a change in what service they need and all three agencies know, agree on those changes. We're waiting to see how this pans out. But it is problematic. Mass casualty plan, ATAB six that I mentioned in the past, that the committee approved that plan, our committee took it back to the regular board of ATAB and the full plan is pending release by them and then approval by P-SAPS Dispatch Centers and all the responders involved and the hospitals. So I'm hopeful that that will withstand the vetting process and become a valid plan that we can start working within. Because the existing plan in no way meets our needs. The fire district use agreements had, had some challenges with those. Some fire chiefs and fire commissioners, both or all of the above, you got wind about the potential for users fees being instituted and the fact that the agreement that we put before him was for only one year. Set off some alarm bells, so I've been contacted by several of those folks. Stating my displeasure and wanting me to explain to them what is going on and why and how we could, we could ever do that. And invited to some commissioners, fire commissioners meetings. They have yet to put off till we can have further discussions, but some of those fire districts are withholding, signing those agreements until they feel more comfortable with it, even though those agreements don't affect user sees or no user sees in them at all, but.
Right.
So that's, that's where I'm at. And I'll continue to work through that and those fire commissioners continue to ask for you to come to their meetings. I will probably invite whichever one of you is represented in that fire district, because that's your level of decision, not mine. And I wouldn't want to speak for you on this issue when those questions are asked. Questions about the nine-one dispatch function? Emergency management program. As you are well aware, but I'll state it for the record, the EUC has been demobilized and returned to level three monitoring status last month, July. The county and all three cities have rescinded their declarations of emergency for the COVID response. And the wildfires, there's lots I can tell you about that. Champion fire in White Salmon demonstrated, you know, the level of risk that all of our communities are at. Seven point one acres inside city limits and had the potential to be devastating thanks to the our local, you know, volunteer firefighters and collaborations with DNR and, and so on. Didn't lose any homes. I facilitated level one and level three notifications per the sheriff's office instructions and that worked out. The Lyle Hill fire was another significant fire, there were multiple other wildfires across the county. I won't list, but if you have any questions, I will give you the information that I can. The next most significant event was the lightning storm of last week, Thursday, the fifth. There were eleven confirmed wildfire starts, two lightning in the afternoon and evening. And six plus smoke investigations that we can track, we can be documented because we had firefighters going in every which direction, all the way from High Prairie to Roosevelt and Pickleton. Or excuse me, Alderdale and Pickleton. The largest of those fires on that day turned out to be the Pine Creek Fire above Pickleton, it's two hundred plus acres. And it started on the reservation and came across the county line. And we had a trigger point of the ridge, because if it had got into the Pine Creek drainage, that heavily wooded drainage lead to right into the town of Pickleton. And with the prevailing winds and the winds of that day, had the firefighters not been able to stop it with some air support from DNR, it could have been devastating. So we're very thankful that that did not develop in that way. And like I said before, that was, that storm also produced some issues with the radio system and power issues. Everything held except for the Diamond Gap site, which had that forty-five minute service outage due to the power interruption. The national or the National Interagency Fire Center potential outlook is, you know, above normal for potential wildfire starts going through the month of August and September. And above normal, you know, chance for precipitation. All the negative indicators for a continued potentially active and aggressive fire season until we get into October. And we may, we may see, and I'll work with the fire chiefs as always, some requests and I might recommend myself, even if they don't, for extensions of the current burn bans. The county outdoor burning, which all are set to expire at the end of September now. But I would expect that we can maybe go into October with that, so. Just a heads up there. I think I'm going to that, there is a project for rural communities and evacuation plans and all kinds of stuff related to wildfires, what they've learned over the last several years out of the wildfires that have taken old communities, so. Making sure I pay attention to that because Dave, I think you can remember that last year, the year before, came out with the list of most vulnerable rural communities in in Washington, wildfire destruction. And I believe we have five of our communities on that list, you know, so. Something to keep track of and make sure that we can take advantage of any of the newest data to help us be prepared for that and react to it when, when and if it does happen. Skip down to program grants. Not much change in those except for a few, the one on the MPG phase two application was submitted on July thirty. Finally able to get that done after an extension. The twenty-one shush phase two application is due on August twentieth. Struggling to get a look at that workbook. And we're still waiting on FEMA and the state for the hazard mitigation grant program. Trying to close that thing out. That's now been like a four and a half year project. But they, like lots of others, having staffing issues and a new guy came on board, it's taking some work on. To work on that. I'm very happy to say that I hired a new emergency management program coordinator. If you weren't aware, the one that I hired back in April, early May, resigned, his wife got a job offer in Idaho, which was very. Resigned. His wife got a job offer in Idaho, which was very attractive. And so they're moving away. So we acted really quickly, reposted that position and got a new hire. Monday of last week was his first day and I'll bring him by sometime in the future. Is there any questions? Oh, I did want to mention on twenty state homeland security grant. We've been told that that grant and because of those national priority area projects that are competitive that I mentioned to you. Maybe the last time or time before when I was here. We determined that that's going to be about a $20,000 decrease in that, in that grant. Because of the way the FEMA is now structuring it and making it competitive. Alright. And I wanted to make sure that you saw my email and for anybody that's listening and lots of people that listen on Zoom now. But that the weekend closures of the Dallas Bridge beginning to the weekend after Labor Day. Significant impacts, if you've read that. And they mentioned that they've worked with first responders, worked with, with me directly for the look at that county side of the river and getting permission to cross the bridge. Or excuse me, cross the top of the dam, the Dallas Dam when the bridge is closed. That's a necessity, especially for our EMS personnel to get people to M C M C without using lifeline. So although I haven't seen the final on that, so I've got to reach back out to them because the Army Corps had a pretty strict vetting process before they would give anybody IDs and permission to cross the top of the dam while the bridge is closed. So I still haven't seen those, but they're claiming that it's all in place. So hopefully when I follow up with them, they'll give all the deputies and and the ambulance crews at the very least. The ability to cross the top of the dam. Any questions on any of that?
Was there?
Okay, now I'd like to give you an update on the department structure review panels work. Today. Now, the Department of Emergency Management Structure Review Panel is made up of myself, H R Director, H R Manager, the Emergency Management Union Shop Stewart and one other communications officer. As well as the local union president and the regional union representative. We've met multiple times over the last two plus or minus months. We're scheduled to meet again on Thursday, this Thursday the 12th. And finalize some things for the information and presentation we're going to provide each of us. In our own specialties and our own contacts. Have reached out and gathered pertinent information regarding this review. And presented it back to the panel for discussion and preparation for a presentation. And recommendations to you later this month. And the information gathered in our discussions have led us to agree that what is needed is a holistic approach to the department structure and staffing changes. To set the department up for long term success in our mission to provide services to all law enforcement, EMS, fire and other users across the county. As well as provide for the public safety of our residents and visitors. Most recently, after looking into different structures and staffing models. Not only for supervisory staff, but also a proper shift coverage. The panel is now working on providing information to you that is likely to include a recommendation for a hybrid structure and staffing. Including the original new Department of Emergency Management structured document. Recommendation that was provided in 2012 by the Public Safety Advisory Board that was appointed by the Board of Commissioners. Before the department and its new structure was, was formed and while that was being considered. And moving the management of nine one dispatch and the radio system under that department. As well as the current Quidditch County Jail structure and staffing model. So kind of a blending of those two turned out to be we're considering based on all the information. Preliminary essence for this new structure and staffing total and increase of between a hundred and fifty thousand and two hundred and sixty thousand dollars annually. Depending on what that final determination of that structure would be. Those are loose numbers right now. Like I said, we're going to meet again on Thursday. And finalize all that and I'll be working to get on your calendar for later this month to make the panel's presentation and provide you with the information you need to, to make a decision as our intent.
What does that translate into F T E's?
Anywhere from one to three. Well, the hundred and fifty number would be two. I think, yes. And it depends on, on where they are and so on and so forth, right? What positions they are. Yes. But Dave, if you remember the the advisory boards recommendations. It's, it's in line with that original recommendation for how to staff and, and structure that supervisory roles. As well as the model that the jail is using, having a supervisor on each shift. And then a supervisor above them and then the chief. But like I said, all those things are still on the table. We, we know full well, like the jail has four corrections officers on duty at, on every shift. So there's, you know, four shifts per week, night shift, day shift because when it comes down to it, nine one dispatch. The EMS district staff and the correction staff of the jail, the only three that actually do twenty four seven. Three sixty five coverage. And staffing, but we don't need for comms officers and we don't need for what in the jail, they're corporals. You know, our language would be leads. We believe we can do that and properly manage that with two leads which span the day shift and night shift on each of the two schedules that rotate through the week. So those people, those leads would work swing shifts and be the duty supervisors for half of the day shift and half of the night shift. And then there would be another one that would take the other days on it. The other team. So it would be, that would be half of the, of the supervisory staff of the jail. Has in their model, but that's having two comms officers on the floor at all times instead of needing three or four like the jail needs. In which, you know, two comms officers on. I said with the increased complexity of the calls and so on is still getting to be a challenge. We've had our, our communications officer in training on for the last two days. And prior in training at the end phase of her training. She's handling all the calls with her trainer. Watching over her and oftentimes they've been overwhelmed to the point where the three of them had to all be working. Full tilt and then the currently step in and we've had four people on the floor. Several times in the last two months. A combination of, you know, domestic violence, mental health, wildfires and so on. So, okay, I guess I'll let some buy, we'll wait till we get the recommendation.
Okay.
Any other questions?
In that. Reminder, gentle reminder to the commissioners and a full info to the watching department. It's this process started before the directive on the budget cuts. So it's not lost on us that potentially one to three new positions and the funding to go with it at a time when other departments and just our funds for that matter are looking at reductions. So, but this process started a couple of months ago or more. So.
Yes, now I regret that I didn't do it six years ago. I tried my best to make do with what I had. It's not working. Anything else?
No, just another simple thing to fix.
I'm sorry, sir.
All we get.
I'll just give you all the information that you need and and not be jealous of your position.
Yeah.
I hate to be the bearer of
No, it's not. It's, it's reality and it's, but it is, you know. That is the, the crux of the, you know, you can't have something for nothing. Things have to be paid for. There's multiple ways of doing it. So.
And as I mentioned earlier in the report, we're working on all those possibilities for sustainable funding.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I think we will break for lunch early since I am going to, I'm going to do the news.
You calling it?
Yeah. I know Jen will be anxiously hanging on every word, but I
That's why it was on there. I thought you guys might all
Yeah.
Do that.
So we'll, we'll go ahead and break for lunch early. So that
Hey, that's one good thing I was able to give you.
You were. He gave us an extra half hour back. Oh, I'm gonna have to
Need lunch.
Yeah.
Not really. They're gonna go.
I'm back. Early. So.
Yeah, I tried.
It's worth it. It's better than nothing. And let's show this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation
Okay.
Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda as presented.
Okay, I will step down and second that motion. Any discussion on the business agenda? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the commissioner meeting minutes from August third, twenty twenty one as presented.
I will step down and second those as well. Can we motion in a second on the meeting minutes? Any discussion on those? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. The minutes are adopted. That brings us to citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the board of commissioners. Please limit your comments to three minutes per individual. And as we do have folks in chambers and on Zoom, we will go back and forth. And so I'll start first in chambers and so if there's somebody here, go ahead and come forward, give us your name. What community you're from?
Hi, Goldendale and Cynthia Arnett, A R N E T T. And I, I'm here only because I didn't realize that there had been a previous meeting regarding the hotel leasing and rapid rehousing opportunity. And there's no notes out yet, so I wasn't able to read that, which probably may have answered a lot of my questions. So my questions are, it was a kind of a shock to me to see that. I understand I've been disagree housing opportunity. So this sounds like something that's new and different in the community versus I know that we have vouchers, programs and stuff like that for people who are homeless, you need help. So how is this different by question?
I don't, no, we're actually going to be discussing that a little bit later. It was on, I wasn't here last week.
Okay.
So then I missed that, but I did get the briefing. We do have programs that are being administered now. We have that.
Right.
And I believe that's we're going to have to discuss whether we would administer it or if we would just pass it through. To W O G A P is the current organization that is administering basically programs like this.
So they would be the, they would be the like funding source. They would be getting the money from the government and then they would be operating the programs. Which they do now.
Which they do now. I mean, the board, the county could decide to I can't imagine we would set up a whole new program
Right.
Where we already have these partners, but that will be a discussion for the board.
Right.
Going to have about, I think about one forty.
Do they, do they currently lease motel rooms? I mean, I know, I know that they give vouchers to motel rooms. I mean, that's common. That's not an unusual thing to do. But actual leasing, I've never, I know they're doing this like in Texas. So you've got to realize my concern. They're doing it in Texas. They're doing it in some other states because of the mass amount of illegal aliens crossing the border. They're having to put them up. So you can, that's what my concern really is if you get right down to it. So are we opening up like about forty different rooms and leasing out one whole motel?
Not to my knowledge. I don't believe we've, that activity has ever occurred in Clickback. I think they're generally they're, you know, a voucher they
Right.
For a night or whatever.
Right.
But again, Y O G A P would be the one.
The, the program has rules and regulations that was part of the packet. You can go on the county website and look at the packet and it gives you a link to the rules and the regulations.
What are eligible uses?
And then if you haven't seen the minutes, because it takes us a while before we approve it. All of our meetings are being recorded and you can go on the county website and you can, you know, forward to that area where it was on the agenda.
Oh.
Launch the entire discussion.
Yeah, Victor just found that today, but his new year minutes weren't from last week, so we didn't get to go there. But I can find that information online. So that's excellent. And what, what's the
I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am. Your, your three minutes have expired.
Oh, okay. So I think this is pretty much
But if you, if you stick around at one forty, this is going to be the topic.
Yeah, that's what I've planned to do and I'm sure I'll learn a lot from that.
Okay, thank you. We are still in citizen comment. I will now go if there's somebody online, so on the Zoom meeting that wishes to make public comment, please raise your hand or unmute yourself, get our attention.
Gabrielle?
Gabrielle? Please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I would like to speak about what I experienced with the transportation for medical transportation in Clickatack County. And how positive that experience was. And I just want to ask the commissioners that they would put back on the agenda, the budget for social services and for the Mount Adams transportation. And possibly let's have a discussion about increasing that budget. I feel that it is important for the commissioners to understand just how much of a resource the senior citizens center is and how much of a resource that transportation, medical, getting to appointments. Getting shopping in, all of those things that add up as services that are rendered by two individuals in, in double digits in the county monthly. And I feel that that budget is insufficient and should be reconsidered and increased. On the ease in which we were able to make the appointment to get individuals in our household picked up at the door, taken to their appointment and returned to the door. That amount of, of for a, for a community and for family members to have that taken care of takes a tremendous amount of stress off. And I feel that we as a county need to honor those that have come before us. Our elderly in the community and to honor them with a budget that reflects our values. And allows for that service to be increased. So thank you for your time and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Okay, we are still in citizen comment. I'll go back to the room if, if there's anybody. Sir, if you want to give us your name and your community.
Yes, sir. My name is Victor Baca, Victor Common Spelling. Last name B as in boy, A C A, and I live in Goldendale.
Go ahead, sir.
I would just like to also address the rapid rehousing opportunity. And the only thing that really jumped out at me is the word opportunity kind of made me think of like, you know, somebody's going to be making some money off of it. It's still would have be the local hotel. The word opportunity kind of made me think of like, you know, somebody's gonna be making some money off of it. It's still be the local hotelier. Said own the hotels or is the opportunity to be able to reach out to the community and help people that are homeless. Are living out there in a primarily they're invisible people. So we'd be going out doing an outreach program and try to bring them in. Also. I haven't looked at what the requirements are for people to participate in this program. Would we be mixing up families along with possible drug users or people with criminal backgrounds? Is there any vetting in place? To verify that, you know, that there's a safety for the people at the hotels. And again, I would just like to ask if they're renting out the entire block of rooms in a hotel or is it specified rooms? I know some of the hotels have. Rooms for like say an astronomy group comes in and wants to visit the telescope. And they've got seven or eight people and they can accommodate that since we're talking about families as well. And I think this is a good opportunity to bring this up since later on you guys will be talking about that. So.
Okay.
Can hardly wait till till that comes up.
It's an interesting.
Well, it's an interesting.
Okay, very good. That's what I have to state.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we are still in citizen comment. I will go back to the. Online, so folks on Zoom. So either raise your hand in Zoom or unmute yourself at star six. I don't think that changed since I was gone last week. Lynn, 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 go ahead.
Hi, this is Lynn Mason in White Salmon. Thank you for letting me speak today. I just wanted to talk about. The time we have for the public comments and it's been really lovely having seven minutes to speak. But I've noticed in the last few weeks, it's gone from seven minutes to five minutes now three minutes. And I realized that there are times where there has been a lot of people showing up and now we have people in person speaking as well. But I've also been at meetings where we've sat and watched the clock timeout for 15 minutes while nobody spoke. I'm wondering, you know, I I'm kind of uncomfortable with reducing public comment time because. That's very important and I feel like that's the voice of the people. That you're hearing. So reducing their time reduces our input in our county government. But I'm wondering if I'm not sure what the rationale behind it is. Maybe you could explain it, but. I'm wondering if rather than continually going down and kind of staying at three minutes. There can be some flexibility to that according to who shows up that day. I mean, I just really like to make sure that people have their maximum amount of time they can to speak. Thank you for your time.
Okay, and I'll respond to that, Ms. Mason. There was and I, as far as I know, I believe we went from seven minutes to three minutes. Not didn't go through with five minutes. We had we had discussed that. And I think our our reduction was really around the ability of there was. When we were at seven minutes, we had many times where there was a lot more people that wanted to speak and they didn't have an opportunity. Because we ran out of time. And so we were trying to get better, actually more voices. That we could hear from. I too, I do worry sometimes, though, that we do have times when we don't have that many people that want to provide public comment. And we are kind of open and I'm I'm hoping to have a discussion with the board as far as when we are in those circumstances. That we would allow. We don't really know that until after we've done it. Allow people to, you know, maybe have a second comment period if we if time allows, but. I too think it's really important for people to have access to the board. The the problem is when we, you know, a few. You know, when we're doing seven minutes, quite often that's only three people that we can actually listen to. And if there's 10 people that want to talk to us, that doesn't seem fair. So I'm I'm open to us trying to find some balance. Where we get the maximum amount of access for folks. Okay, and with that, I will go. We are still in public comment and I don't have any more. Folks, actually, that's not true. I just had some folks if they were. But I will go if there's anybody in Zoom that wishes to comment to the board.
0088.
0088. Sorry, that was my own timer. Go ahead. Go ahead. Please identify yourself.
Rochelle Dimmick, 55 Pepper Hill Road.
All right.
Welcome back. Last week, we were attending the Cypress Creek Renewables Meeting. And I implied that the CUP would require EIS and this made residents believe that that they weren't using the ESPEC process. And it was also noted that they met with our planning last week. And so we were just hoping to maybe better clarify. Maybe if they had discussed what their plans were, if they were going through ESPEC. Or if they were indeed going to go to the CUP process. I'm just trying to stay informed and active by participating in the ESPEC process, if that's what they're going through. How do residents become aware of the ESPEC public hearings? Are they gonna be using the same processes that the the county would be using as far as going to the Sentinel? And on the county website? Also, it says that what I just want to know what what process they're planning on using, if you do know. And in ESPEC, it says that the council cooperates with our county. And who are we supposed to use as a point of contact to direct our questions to? There was some scrutiny about too many public records requests or maybe bothering our planning department too much and it was. Maybe taken away from other important projects. We just want to be respectful in that matter. And there was a preliminary potential site study that's involved with that. And you notice that several residents were not on their site map that they that they presented to the public last week. And we just want to know how residents that do have property, how they can be represented on that map so that we can be part of that preliminary study. Are you still there?
Yes, yes, I'm I'm taking notes.
I'm trying to make everything happen in three minutes. Also brought to our attention that there's a need for a childcare facility site. Is that correct?
Could you say that again? I didn't hear that.
And then off the subject a little bit, there was a childcare facility site that needed to be worked out. Is that what the issue is of finding daycare for for residents here in in Clickatack County? Am I under the am I under the right assumption that they just don't have a facility site?
Daycare facility site?
Yeah.
Is that for the workers? She said.
Um, no. Is an issue in our county and I was just wondering why there was such a barrier there. Is it because there's no facility site for that project? And it seemed like they had some funding or grants aside for for that, but maybe like what's the barrier there? Like, how can residents know what and how they can help?
Okay, we can actually get you there. We spent I or I'll wait till they get. I don't want to use your time. Go ahead. I'll answer that.
Oh, you know, you know, many of us might might have some land to donate, you know, especially if they're gonna be surrounded by two acre lithium ion batteries. We might have some, you know, such a space to be there, you know, maybe they might want to consider putting their childcare facility there.
Okay, your your time has elapsed. I will I'll quickly try. As far as on the daycare issue, that is a that is a that's a huge issue in Clickatack County access to daycare. We did spend the last year, there was a there was a work group with a study which they just released the information. Well, not just a couple of months ago. I can certainly send that to you. It kind of outlines what the barriers, what they're they're assuming. Why there's no access to daycare in Clickatack County. And so we can definitely do that. I'm gonna defer on your other questions as far as on the ESPEC process. And then the the site map as far as that. I will get back to you. So I'm gonna go now. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. I'll go. In the room, we are in citizen comment right now. This is an opportunity for to address the board. I'm going back and forth. We had two new folks come in. Did you wish to address the board? No, no. Okay, I will go back to the Zoom folks then. If there is anybody that wishes to address the board, please mute yourself. And Ms. Dimmick, you're still open.
And someone else.
I would like to comment.
Oh, go ahead. Please have your name.
My name is Lisa Evans from White Salmon.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Evans.
Um, yeah, good afternoon, commissioners. I just wanted to update and correct myself from a comment that I made last week regarding. The school boards and mask mandates. It was my understanding that school boards had broad discretionary power. Over what happened in their school district. And after I stated that Commissioner Anderson was able to forward me an email. That came down from Superintendent Reichdahl and Governor Inslee stating actually that the school boards were not allowed to disobey. And that is a quote, and that they would pull all state and federal funding for any school district does that does not enforce the mask mandate. So I've wanted to correct myself on that, that indeed the school boards do not at this time have the choice. On whether or not children can be masked. Obviously, a lot of parents are making tough decisions right now about educating their children. And it's super unfortunate that this power is being taken away from the school boards. You know, my concern, a lot of other parents' concerns is if the state's gonna do this with masks, are they next gonna do it on vaccinations? And then, I mean, it just seems like sort of unlimited power that's being forced on us by the state right now. So I did, I have called a lawyer that specializes in this type of litigation. He has essentially said, as parents, we don't have much power. However, if there is a school board that would like to stand up against. This, the the mandates in this email that was released by Reichdahl and Inslee, they would definitely have a very strong case. And this individual would be willing to take it on. So we're not completely powerless, but I will just close with. You know, that just sort of begged the question for myself then is if, you know, if you guys can just kind of comment on. Is is that essentially an overreach of state's power into our counties? You know, where where are we able to draw the line of what we do in the county? Versus what is forced on us by the state as per RCW? Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
The only thing I can say is is that we are a subdivision of state government. We gain all of our power. And because we have limited power and only the power that the RC does give us. So it is actually the legislature that that gives us our direction. As county commissioners is.
Okay.
Ways.
Okay, we are still in citizen comment. I'll give the room another opportunity. Nope, still no. Okay, we will still we'll go back to the. Zoom participants or if you're on the phone. So raise your hand, get our attention, unmute yourself, star six. Anybody who would like Sherry is unmuted. Okay. Sherry, are you unmuted? Go ahead.
Yes, I am. Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to let the people's voices be heard. And I do hope if you have remaining time that you do let people continue to speak if they've already spoken once. So. With that said, I would like to ask a yes or a quick question. Have either one of you viewed the video of the Under Canvas SEPA appeal hearing?
I have not.
Nor have I.
Okay, thank you very much. I would suggest since you are our commissioners, that you view this video. And I have a lot of concerns as a citizen, as I've been tracing and watching this project of Under Canvas. Does it directly affect my community and the safety and the general welfare of all of us in the neighborhood? And I would ask you to view our county decision maker, our SEPA decision maker and her cross examination from the citizen's attorney. And ask yourself why she was compelled to say, I do not know, several, several times to all the questions asked of her. If she is our county decision maker, how does she not know questions regarding the SEPA that she has approved? And has said that it has no significance. One of the main topics was the road and our public works. It appears to me through his lay witness cross examination, he had quite a cozy relationship with Under Canvas. And along with our local fire district, they have quite a cozy relationship that goes far beyond processing a professional application. That is my opinion and I I ask that you review these hearings and the cup hearing as commissioners who have oversight of this process. And with the road at the end of the of the end of the hearings, it was agreed upon. The road is less than 20 feet wide in several locations. We do not have an evacuation plan that can get people out safely. This resort, the largest resort in Clickatack County proposed for Clickatack County will not be able to evacuate. Not only the guests, which is shameful that Under Canvas would put their guests in that position, but your citizens, your people that you are to protect. And also, with this being said, it was very disheartening to understand under or to hear Under Canvas propose. That the road being widened for their project be shared by the taxpayers. I am saying right now, the taxpayers do not ask for me and I would bet a lot of us would weigh in. We do not agree with sharing the cost to upgrade a road to put in a resort that doesn't belong there that requires a conditional use permit. So with all that said, I hope that as you are our commissioners and you have complete oversight of the county planning. And the SEPA process that we are assured of is a safe process, is a good process, that you review these hearings and you ask yourself. How much did your county know? How much did your SEPA decision maker know? How much does your public works department know? How much does the local fire district know about this project? Because it is quite embarrassing that nobody knew anything, but yet the largest resort proposed was approved.
Okay, Ms. Buske, your your time has elapsed.
Okay, please watch.
Okay, thank you for that comment. We are still in citizen comment. So I'll give an opportunity. For folks.
Hello.
Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Delmer Eldred, Golden Dale, Washington. And, you know. What Sherry just said is so needs to be looked at very strong. And Under Canvas basically is a party time for apartment dwellers in Portland and Vancouver. The thing's a goldmine because that's what's gonna, those people are coming to have a good time on the weekends. At the expense of the people that are residents there. And another thing I would like to add is that you people, you commissioners. These issues and concerns are not going away. And this duck and hide. Philosophy that you guys have, that if you just don't answer anything or don't commit to a town hall meeting where people can come. And ask you why you have made decisions that you've had, made the statements that you've had is not going away. The best thing there is to do is to get a town hall meeting together and put out. What you guys, what your philosophy is, why you do what you do. And then every month you have a town hall meeting. If you can't answer the questions this month, next month you give the answers. But you know, this is gonna have to, this is gonna have, this is gonna have to come to light because it's not going away. And every time you guys dodge it, it just gets, it builds more questions of why, you know. So anyway, I just think that it's time for you guys to face up to the public and find out. Let them know why you, you know, if you're committed to the the things that you're doing, why you are. And a solar, you know, it's when you look at solar, you look at the amount of waste. Solar waste that is being accumulated constantly every day. California is looking for ways to export panels because they can't. There's no place to put it. Arlington has panels and they have no idea what to do and they're getting more every day and they're just storing and trying to figure out what they're gonna do with it. And you guys are basically headed for a solar disaster with these industrial sites. Because those panels are not going away. They're just gonna pile them up wherever these industrial sites are at. You guys are to blame for that. Anyway, that was all I had to say.
Mr. Eldred. Go ahead.
Mr. Eldred, we do have town hall meetings. We're having a town hall meeting next Tuesday for the tract. Area up in Glenwood. It is specific to that, though. We we do have meetings when we feel they are necessary and appropriate.
You you have you you need a meeting right here in Goldendale where most of concerns are at. And that track meeting that you're having over there. And that track meeting that you're having over there in Glenwood, if you bring up the issues that concern us, you guys will not listen to it, guaranteed. You will not give us the time because that's not what your town hall meeting is about there.
You are correct. That's why I said it is about the, it is in the location where it's at, about what it is at.
That's right. So you need a town hall meeting right here to handle the concerns and there are buildings daily. And the longer you guys play duck and dodge, the more there are. And if you don't start answering up to questions, you're going to face repercussions for, for not doing your job.
Thank you for your comments, sir. And I, I would actually take exception to duck and dodge. That is, that is your characterization. That's not mine. Any action or.
No, that is, that.
This is why, this is why we can't have a town hall is I have, I have a history of having, I have done. Dozens and dozens of town hall meetings over my career in every community in this county. Town halls are great. I love town hall meetings. But there have, we have always had a history of, of having a productive discussion with the community. And not an opportunity to have a platform for an audience that I am not interested in doing that. I am, I'm happy to answer questions and the, and the board takes no action without having a discussion in a public meeting. And as to why we're doing what we're doing. So I, so your, your time has elapsed. Sir, sir, your time has elapsed. Your, your, I was very generous, I was very generous with your three minutes. But your time has elapsed. I, we do have, actually we're out of time now for citizen comment. And so I will close citizen comment and we will move on with our agenda.
Yes. Since there are other people potentially, since we have 44 members, I would like to add a time for those who have not spoken at the end. Today during, which would be at 2:05 or thereabout.
Okay, I would support that.
But only for those who have yet to speak. So if you, if you didn't have a chance, star six or unmute, we will, we will open it back up during the board sending at 2:05.
This illustrates the need for seven minutes to three minutes. We had, we had lots of commenters and we'll see if we still have more. So our next piece of business is unfinished business. Human Resource Administrative Service Director Robbin Cleve. Requested for verbal approval to move the code compliance officer position from the building inspection and code compliance department to be a standalone. Department directly under the board of commissioners. This action will be formalized in a resolution next week. Consent agenda, if we so determine we're going to do that.
Good afternoon, commissioners. So I've just given you a draft of the new revised code compliance officer job description that was sent out last week. This has the changes proposed by Commissioner Anderson as well as the change proposed by Commissioner Christopher. This is the first time in a public setting, all three commissioners now are seeing the changes proposed by other commissioners.
Which, what did, what did.
So Commissioner Christopher's concern was that the way it read was that it required a four-year degree. And so we, we changed, you'll see in this one. At the top highlighted, we just rewrote it to talk about graduation from high school GED associate degree or bachelor degree and or direct work experience and following. Basically says the same thing. His concern was that the first thing you read is bachelor's degree and experience, then people will self opt out and not apply. I'm not sure this position requires a four-year degree. If someone brings one with them, that's great, but I'm not sure it's a, is a non-exempt position. It's a required. Has been in the past, but. I don't think it needs to be. And if they have experience and a combination of experience and education, they should be able to apply.
Okay, actually I had no problem with that, with that change.
So all of the changes proposed by the two commissioners, Mr. Chair are highlighted in yellow. My, as I said in the email I sent out with it. Basically what I did was took the current job description and changed the tone and moved it away from enforcement to compliance, which is what I've been overhearing the commissioners talk about. With a increased focus on education, mediation, collaboration and voluntary compliance. So those were the elements that I added to in the first draft. And then all of the knowledge, skills and abilities, and there's quite a selection, won't help you recruit the right person, but it'll help you identify the right person when they apply. It's just to give people applying guidance and that's the standards they'll hold an applicant to. Make your approval, we would ask for approval on the revised job description and verbal approval to post the position. And we'll come back next week with the revised org chart and resolution. And then I'll have Jen talk about the financial piece of this.
Nope, I'm good. And I, and I would say I shared. I had some concerns in the, in the first draft as far as it did seem to have a lot of emphasis on a, on a four-year degree. And the experience that I was a little concerned. Those are great if people bring them, but I think there's a, there's. There's some skill sets we're looking for that are not necessarily, aren't available in somebody that doesn't have a four-year degree.
And in terms of experience, we also brought in that a little bit. Out just enforcement, a background and one into many other different mediation arbitration, you know, the people skills in background that.
I was curious on the, one of them where it was a strikeout and it was a replacement, the stay calm. The old language was manage emotional, emotions and stressful situations, stay calm and curious when exploring conflict.
I thought they both worked actually. Maybe the author of the original one, that well, curious helps.
This is a better.
Curious people look for solutions.
Yes, so, yeah, I'm a yes. Go, go for it.
And then in terms of the upcoming supplemental budget, which typically is the last one of the year, not always, but the third one is the. As far as moving funds into a new department. So Jen's got some general information there.
I reached out to building inspection to provide some assistance on breaking down their budget because. It looks like the compliance officer used to be divided up into three different areas within her budget. So they got back with me and I provided me some information. I reached back out for further clarification. But I was able to come up with a rough estimate of 30% of the expenditure budget. I would like to hear back from her before, you know, I make anything formal, formal proposal to you.
But next week's the, when departments turn in their supplemental budget requests. So that's why we're working on it with Lynn, trying to identify the funds, the funds will follow the work. We'll create a new department which will report, of course, like other departments directly to the county commissioners. Rather than put that money in another budget and we'll create a code compliance budget or department. To put all the money in there. And it was some increased funds for training because one of the requirements is 40 hours of mediation training. So, you know, there'd be some startup training cost, so.
And just a reminder, all of these are general fund dollars as well.
We have some. Training opportunities during board commissioner meetings between 1:00 and 1:30 for mediation. Get some experience.
I have one final thing if I may. So we do have a verbal approval to proceed and then bring this back in supplemental offense. Okay. Long range planning, I talked to Moche. We'd like to recommend or ask the commissioners. Feelings on posting the long-range planner position with Proffman. We've got very little if any qualified applicants. The recruiting season, people don't like to think there is, but once school starts, people are a little less reluctant to move. Once winter sets in, they're even less reluctant to move. So this is kind of the end of the recruiting season, maybe our best opportunity. The cost to Proffman would be $6,400 to $7,200. They have posted these type positions before. They've planners is one of the. Positions they have posted around the state.
And if it doesn't get filled, filled, we don't pay. What was the incentive pay? You keep talking.
You know, it's kind of act, we keep doing what we've always done. We may get what we've always got and try and do something different. They have a much broader reach than we do. And Moche's already posted it on the planning association, the state planning group. And we, it's been on, you know, NeoGov and Indeed and all the job boards that NeoGov posts to governorjobs.com. So it could be an issue of salary and it's, it's, it's a niche market. A long-range planners are a rare commodity. It's a rare experience.
Well, I'm loathe to spend money on, but, you know, we committed to the position we need to, we're not getting any results.
How long's, how long's the contract open for? Do they keep pushing it out?
Oh, we'll put it, yeah, they'll push it out till we have a first review date and then sometimes they'll just leave it posted, you know, till we tell them to take it down. So they, they sometimes leave it up. They'll take it down when we interview folks, but they're pretty good at working with a lot of times. They'll leave it up as long as they can after our first and second review, so.
I guess. Yeah.
The reason I ask now is because we would need to put that in the supplemental budget for Moche to cover the cost.
But how, I mean, like, if we have somebody just go through, you know, LinkedIn and start picking what we want, like other companies, because we've talked about that. What's the cost of that if we get that?
I don't know. You, you mentioned about $4,500. I haven't looked into the recruitment costs. With the upcoming.
It's like a headhunter where they actually go and.
Well, if you have recruitment level or LinkedIn, then you can actually go in. You become a recruiter. You can seek out people that have. In their experience or their title. So.
And then, I mean, that's in essence, the way you start doing it is you start having to track down and chase who you want, what you want. Which is what you'd hope that, you know, for $6,400, what Proffman is doing is they're, you know, correct emailing people, hey, you have these experiences. Have you thought about click attack county?
Yeah, they told me once they have about 6,000 people in their email this serve. Throughout the Northwest, so. Okay, we could add that. It's just not necessarily the right budget year, maybe to add that kind of expense. But I can look into it and see what the cost is to get the recruiting level of LinkedIn.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we're going to have harder and harder time. All right, okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Chairman.
Yes.
I did reach out to Leslie now, she's not available, but I believe, I believe that her housing director may be calling in and that was, I recall. Where they could answer any questions.
Okay. So we are now in our agenda. This is a follow-up discussion regarding the hotel leasing and rapid rehousing funding opportunity through the Department of Commerce. And so do we see if she's on?
I don't see her.
Do we have anybody from WAGAP on the Zoom call? They're going to answer questions. That's really unfortunate.
You didn't have a chance to.
I looked, I looked through the, but I did not watch the Zoom last week.
So, yeah, with just Dan and I here, we're in a discussion on whether we want to create our own program or whether we want to just transfer these to WAGAP like we do with all the others.
Right.
And, you know, of course, it's my, my idea is like, that's what they're do, that is within their, their wheelhouse. That's what they're good at. Why would we create something for a 15% overhead?
Right.
We don't, we don't have anybody on staff that, you know, we'd have to bring on somebody to manage a program like that. It makes no sense. And then the question that Dan asked was, well, where, where would these potential hotels be? And so WAGAP said they work with somebody in Skamania County, one of the hotels down there and one in Goldendale that they've worked with in the past. They've never worked with anything. And like Simon, they do work with a hotel in Hood River. But I don't know if any of these dollars could be used in Hood River to house, to house people from the Washington side. So that was one of my questions. And then the question I asked this morning, it's about $135,000 that we get through the recording fees that could be used for this. And then there is an entire, you know, rules, regulations on who can be housed, how long they can be housed, what, what they can, you know, what's available. And it sounds like the state's got it pretty well figured out on, on what their expectations are for these, these dollars. The one that I kept asking about is, is hotels, it talks about renovation and fixing. And I think what that comes down to is, is in essence, if, if you house a homeless person because in one of these hotels. And they do more damage to the hotel than their, than a, than a regular resident is available. Then it starts a process where the hotel can be reimbursed for the replacement of all that. So it's not like you just pay for, you know? And then they have an entire audit team or something that comes in to ensure that that, that damage was, was real and did occur. Dan asked the question last week, you know, like, is this, is this, if we build it, will they come? And Leslie's answer was, is, you know, everything that we do is primarily, it's all for locals. That are experiencing temporary homelessness.
Okay.
So that's how I recall everything going, but my guy is not so great this week.
Okay, I had gone through, because we did get the, I did get the. Funding overview and it had the, you know, what was eligible and which is all consistent with what you said as far as the. Leasing and I took the hotel leasing as far as the repair was more like, yeah, because it says beyond normal, just wear and tear. I suspect that is more of a. Thing that's used in larger jurisdictions where they actually do go and, you know, because we've seen jurisdictions that in bigger cities where they, they just rent the whole facility. Yeah, King County bought one, which this, I don't know if you can actually buy something with this, but I don't think so. But they have, but yeah, you're right. They did that because I know early on this was a different program, but when we were doing. We were looking for quarantine facilities early in the pandemic where we had to identify. Our initial we were looking for was that we would just use hotel rooms. And but none of the area, the only offer we had was, was from one. Place locally, but then they expected us to basically go and rehab the facility after the quarantine was over. Because they felt like their brand had been, would be so damaged by having housed quarantine folks. That, so I suspect that's what this is for too. The same kind of thing is that they. Because generally my understanding, WAGAP, how they work now, it's, it's a unit by unit, room by room. They're not. As you said, they work with a couple of different partners. I'm not sure who they are in Goldendale, who they are currently using. I would assume if they. If we pass this through them, that they would just use their existing. Contacts and relationships and I don't think we would see much of a difference here as far as from what's already going on. I would say for me, I'm inclined to, I don't want to set up a new program. Especially it's a one, you know, it's just a one-shot deal. You know, $130,000 is not a whole lot of money to set up a new program. And then who's going to administer it? Who's, this, this is what they do. It seems that that's the most efficient use of the money. So I would support that. I'm going to, you had some questions earlier? If you just, it's.
That, that, that helps.
Okay.
Yeah, because, you know, the funding, I understand what that, I know what $135,000 can do and that's not a lot if you have to make a program. Yeah, no, no, it makes sense. I'm glad.
And I do see as far as like folks that are. Let's see, as far as who can, they're, they do have to have income verification. It's not required at program entry, but after the first 90 days. Then the, and WAGAP deals with all this stuff all the time because almost most, most of these programs, I'm on the housing authority and we administer the section eight. And so we had to do the income verification annually, the certification on every single person in the program. So, yes, ma'am.
How many homeless are in Click Attack County?
I don't know. They did a, one of, one of those called point in time. I don't know. They did a one of those called point in time. It was a lot more than we I was, to be frank, I was a little skeptical, honestly, of what that the number was as high as what they were stating it was. But that is, I mean, I I have to take them at their word because they do. They take a snapshot once a year where they go and identify. And these are they can be transient where they're way through, but we don't have a big population of that as far as people moving through. Yes, ma'am.
So my son was classified as homeless because he lives with me. And it was three, so him and his two kids were classified as homeless.
Right.
Through the state of Oregon. So are they truly homeless or are they just living with mom and dad while they're getting back on their feet?
I can't answer that. I think there's some of that. What you're describing is included in that number. And that's what we attributed. I know we got the report from WaGAP came and presented. That was probably oh, six months or so ago and we did. We had a conversation about that too. And then also the the classification of homeless like students too, like these were was the same thing and there are people that are same thing where they're they're couch surfing. They don't. Maybe they're staying with grandma part of the time and then with their friend and they're and they do count those as homeless people, but I can find that report and get it to you if you want. You have it that look see Aaron's just look at he split.
Yeah.
That's why she's a star.
They served in their community in December for twenty twenty. They served four hundred and two homeless individuals through their program themselves, pulling up what their actual account was.
And was that for just ClickItCast County, Aaron, or was that for the?
It should be for both.
Yeah, they had it. They had it broke in there to ClickItCast and Skamania. So I think that's the combined number.
So all of ClickItCast County, you serve four hundred and some say five hundred homeless. It WaGAP.
That might be ClickItCast and Skamania County together because they span both, but still it was a big number to me. And we did. I remember we drilled into it pretty extensively because that was really shocking to me because we don't we don't think of us as.
There's a lot of different definitions.
There is a lot of different definitions of what is homeless.
Do you want me to forward this to you?
Okay.
While they work on that.
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah.
So we didn't have we just had a follow up discussion. We didn't have any change, any decisions on that.
Okay.
Okay.
They wins the deadline. They need to.
I saw the thirteenth, but I believe I read somewhere that there's a little later one.
I mean, do we need to make a motion to?
That was my anticipation that you would today.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to move the hotel leasing and rapid rehousing to opt out, I believe is the proper term, so that the monies would move to WaGAP.
Yeah, I would step down and second that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing the other, the only discussion I would have is let's be absolutely sure. I think you're correct is that we have to opt out and there it default goes to them. But I just want to make sure.
Whatever.
If that doesn't, yeah, I want to. Yeah, whatever it is. We don't want to administer. We want WaGAP to get the dollars. So with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with three items.
Did something get? I thought we had four. It does say three. It does say three. I thought WaGAP pulled. Yeah. There's four items, yes.
The four items.
Or you choose your favorite three out of four.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the four items. Sorry, Scott.
Yeah, you're you're out. I'll step down a second to motion to approve the full consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrants in the amount of two hundred and two thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty nine cents. And the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of zero for the date ending August ninth, twenty twenty one.
Okay, I'll step down and second that motion as well. Any discussion on the bills? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Another.
Okay, we have two VPs.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrants in the amount of zero and the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of seven hundred and seventy eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty two dollars and forty two cents for the date ending August ninth, twenty twenty one.
I'll step down and second that motion. Have a motion in a second to pay the employees. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. This is a board pending. We're running a little ahead. We're gonna go ahead and if Aaron, I see you're here. If you want to give us, since we're a little ahead of our two oh five that we kind of advertised for second public comment period. So you you got a good ten minutes if you want or more if you need it.
I hope not, but you never know.
You got Rob to run over here, so.
He's nervous about what I'm about to say. No, not really. No, I just want to stop by and do a quick update about COVID. We're I think we all knew that fall could be a little sketchy. I think we're getting prepared. There was I am fairly certain no healthcare entity that was prepared for it to get this bad this fast. Caught pretty much everyone off guard. We're in a county of thirty nine point two percent of our populations fully vaccinated. I've moved away from quoting the different age groups because at this point it doesn't matter. There are, you know, everyone at this point is vulnerable. We're seeing breakthrough cases. You know, we'd seen one and then it was a couple of weeks and then we saw two and I would I think we've seen at least three or four, if not five this week already. The state numbers are as high as up to twenty percent twenty percent of cases at this point in the vaccine. There is a twenty percent breakthrough rate in vaccinated individuals. Vaccines have completely fallen off the board. We're giving about a hundred countywide every week. We need people to get vaccinated. We have fair coming up. We know there will be a lot of good turnout for there. Everyone's excited about fair. School starts two weeks after that and are really concerned about what the next couple of months are going to look like if things don't kind of start to shift. The modeling that I've seen suggests that these numbers won't spike for another month. So even though we're seeing, I think we had fifty nine cases last week, so we're looking at that to continue to increase every week until sometime mid September if the modeling projections are correct. Eighty five percent of the circulating cases are Delta. That should scare everyone. We're seeing that's part of the breakthrough cases part. We're seeing that it's more infectious. So before where you might get another household member potentially sick or maybe a coworker, you're now getting far five, six people sick where the average originally with the original virus was one or two. So I just wanted everybody to be aware, the hospitals are feeling overwhelmed with testing, so people aren't able to get in. If I called right now and said I'd like to get a test, I may not be able to get in for a day or two just because the demand is so high right now. North Shore, they were seeing, I think they said an average of four or five people a day, just kind of over the last couple of months for testing. They're getting they're currently doing twenty five to thirty tests per day. They were full today by nine thirty this morning. They're asking people to go other places because they just don't have the capacity to actually do the testing right now. It's a staffing issue. It's a supply issue. It's not just our county. It's all across the board. So.
So on the on the testing, are we still? You know, do most of those have to go out? I mean, as far as to be processed and then are we, how is our lab capac? Because, you know, early on it was, you know, we're it was a week to ten days to get result and it was like, what's the point?
We're at the so that all of the facilities have a pretty good mix. So they have the rapid test so you could get the results potentially right then. Or they have the send out tests which are taking one to two days to get back. So there is a pretty quick turnaround for the for the cases.
Aaron, do you see these people testing because they're afraid they have it primarily or is it because they want to go somewhere else?
They're symptomatic and I'll be honest, my understanding is that the clinics are triaging people and they are not putting travel at the top of their list. So you as a symptomatic person will get on the list to get tested before you as a traveler get. And that's that's just a capacity supply. That's where we're at. We have a lot of disease in the community and I'm I'm worried more hard decisions are going to have to be made in healthcare as a community. There are issues in both hospitals getting patients transferred out. And it's not just because it's a COVID patient. It's if you have a heart attack, there is a shortage of hospitals in this state. One of the providers at Skyline called ten different hospitals to get, I think it was stroke, anyway, out. I've heard people have getting flown to Spokane, Bend, Boise. You know, you have like in a trauma scenario, they want you to get to definitive care within an hour. It's taking us more than an hour to find somewhere to send you. And can that really impacts your potential outcomes and how well you do in the long term. So it's not just about COVID. It's about how full our hospitals beat pat are. And potentially any other issue that you have that's serious may be impacted because of what's happening with our beds being full. And by full, I mean, we just don't have as many because we don't have as much staff and that's across the state, not specific to this county. So the governor did recommend masks in indoor settings last week, so we're we've been encouraging people to do that mostly because of how infectious Delta is and mostly because of the numbers of cases that we're seeing roll through every day. We know that it's being transmitted out in the community. We've had quite a few people tell us they legitimately do not know where they got it from. They do not know someone was positive. No one in their circles is sick or testing positive as well. I mean, you could argue that one either way, but there's enough people that have said that that makes me think that the community spread and transmissibility is definitely increased. So.
So, Aaron, with the the twenty percent breakthrough rates, are those equal across the people who've got one vaccine or another or is one some vaccines better than others?
Actually, I'm not going to answer because I don't know with as fast as this breakthrough, the case rate has gone up. I don't know that there's actually data behind that that says one way or another. They just know these people are vaccinated. These people have ended up being positive because it went from a very low percentage to, I think, last week they quoted thirteen percent and this week they're proposing it could be as high as twenty percent. So it's it's just definitely going up quickly.
So are we still seeing though that the breakthroughs is they tend to be milder?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
So there's.
Yeah, and tough conversations.
I don't I don't want to lose that in the conversation where we're saying.
Thank you.
We're saying, please get, we need everybody to get vaccinated, but then we're also saying, well, there's all these breakthroughs. And so it's it's kind of they're kind of, but there's still a huge benefit.
Yeah, proportionally, the people who have a vaccine, is it less of them that are being that are being admitted to the hospital?
So they're saying that the vaccine is still in the eighty eighty five percent effective against COVID, but ninety five percent effective against hospitalization of death. So having the vaccine makes a huge impact. The people that we've talked to that have been breakthrough cases have said I am so grateful I had the vaccine because I don't think I would have lived through this if I didn't. They're still symptomatic. They still don't feel good, but they're definitely not as sick as they're maybe conditions or otherwise would warrant. So that's been even though we are seeing the breakthrough cases, we feel like people have not been as sick as the ones that we're talking to that are unvaccinated. The other thing that's very concerning to me and frankly upsetting is within the last week, we've had two people under forty in the hospital. One was in their thirties. And we do have a minor right now that's in the ICU that had no other health conditions. So that should be truly scary for all of us. It's someone that's young enough that they cannot get a vaccine. Their entire family was vaccinated. So truly be mindful about who you're around and what scenarios you're around in them because you can truly pass that to anyone. And they're seeing in the South that children are more affected at this point. We're already starting to see younger ages. So if you can't get vaccinated, wear your mask. If you can't wear a mask or get vaccinated, just distance yourself from people where you can, but we're hoping that more people will get vaccinated. So.
Okay.
I know I feel like a ray of sunshine this week.
Every week.
Every. It's true. Thanks, Nick. Oh, and then sorry, one more thing because that's why Rob's here. Um, I did see the emergency order that got rescinded at the end of June, which ended emergency leave. I'm concerned as a director and then as the public health department as well. With the breakthrough cases with seeing an increase in children getting sick, I just I have some concerns that that we could leave a lot of people out to dry. Because we would, you know, if their children are sick and they're out for quarantine, they could be vaccinated and still have to stay home. Like they've made all the right choices. They're still stuck at home without potentially any coverage for leave. So I just wanted to go on the record and say I had some concerns about that going away. And if you have any questions, Casey can answer them.
Is there any way that we can reinstate that without reinstating the emergency or do we have to reinstate the emergency?
To be able to there is there is no other way.
No, you don't have to.
So can't we just make it so? I mean, because that was certainly never our intention as far as the folks, I mean, that it's you know, I plus I think when we rescinded, that was in that golden time of
Yes.
Everything was going to be wonderful and we were just moving on back to normal and there were going to be no more impacts. But no, I don't want any employees, you know, you know. Especially, I mean, we can't know one way or the other, but you could have done everything that you possibly could do and you could still have an impact and we shouldn't have taken. We don't want to add another.
When we ask the staff work up a resolution for next week, the entire board can discuss.
Probably what we do is not not start over with everybody another eighty hours. When you extended it the first time, it was for those who would not use their eighty hours because the federal law initially was one eighty block, eighty hour block.
Right.
And extended it to two hundred. It wasn't extended. At that point, it became voluntary on the commissioner's behalf. So unless you're asking us to start over again, we probably just pick it back up where it ended.
Yeah, and only continue the emergency basically, not the extended family.
Yeah, though, I mean, that's your purview, but I like not county employees, but we are seeing employees who don't have that access anymore and it's becoming a hardship. They've gotten their vaccines. Their children are getting sick. Now they have to stay home with children and then that's a big it's a financial and social impacts for them. So just not wanting that to happen to any of our employees for sure.
There was a question back here yesterday.
I'm I'm going to make it worse. Is the death rate on the Delta variant higher or lower with COVID?
In the unvaccinated, it is higher and I can't speak to the specific percentage.
Okay.
And then in this county, we've only had thirteen. We should I should not say only. I apologize. We have had thirteen deaths in this county. The last one was mid July. They don't we don't know what variants they had in this county. Our surveillance isn't like we can tell you they had COVID, but we can't say it was this variant.
But since Delta came out several a month or so ago, have we seen an increase in deaths in this county?
Not in this county, no.
Okay. Weird question. Sorry.
No, that's totally fine. That's a very valid question. Yeah, we we're just under, I don't know, how many months in this are we? Like eighteen or something like that?
Twenty seven.
Five hundred and some days.
Is that what it is? Okay. I like it. I'm going to start doing it by the day.
I am not. I mean, we're we our average would be less than one death per month throughout the whole throughout the whole pandemic.
And one death is one too many.
It is absolutely one too many and I unfortunately see more coming.
Okay, well, thank you for that enlightening, frightening, scary.
We we should be scared.
Should be. I know.
This is a seeing young people in the hospital and in the ICU has been a game changer for me this week. I mean, I obviously we take that seriously and that's my job to take it seriously, but it it's the game is changing and we need to be prepared.
You know, as we said, any any death is is one too many, but there it's it's different when you see, you know, an eighty year old person with underlying in the hospital versus a minor that's otherwise healthy. That that things have changed. This this variant is different. Okay, thank you. I'm going to go back now. There's no more good. Yes, I will now reopen a public comment. Before I do that, though, go ahead, Ms. Casey.
Sorry, um, we had our in the solid waste department, our litter crew supervisor. Sorry, um, we had our in the solid waste department, our litter crew supervisor. Submitted his resignation a few weeks ago and so I'm here to see if I can get verbal to post that position. It's right there to five. It's non exempt and they would post it as steps one through three.
Okay, okay, now I will open up a public comment, our second public comment. If there's anybody that did not get an opportunity the first time. Please. Raise your hand, unmute yourself. Am I seeing anybody? I have a lot of screens to look at, so we're all looking. Okay.
Well, that's nice.
Yeah, that's nice. So I will now close the second public comment period and that will move us on in, did we have any other board pending before I take the prosecuting attorney?
I did have something for you, commissioners. Your town hall in Glenwood.
Yes.
Had arranged, they do have wifi and have arranged to make sure we had wifi as well as a PA system. And I just wanted clarification if you. I won't take any video equipment. We can, if you want to zoom it to allow people, if they cannot actually be near a person, or did you just want it to be live?
Well, typically.
This is Commissioner Christopher and I would say we do it live only.
Public comment.
Public, yeah, you got it just in the nick of time there, public comment, okay. Well, the door.
Yeah, people that affects up there are going to be there.
They're going to be there.
Most of them don't have internet anyway, so.
Really, it's Glenwood, so that's a really good, I really poor cell service, so, yeah, I think we'll just do it live. We'll do it old school.
And I will confirm with the school that. PA system is available. I've asked for a table with some chairs. That way, if you guys wanted to set up like you kind of did last, yeah, last time, would you like me to reach out to Representative Mossburger, see if she'd like to join you or no?
I don't think so.
I think I might have asked you that already.
Yeah, I think, no, I, no, you didn't. I mean, I would defer to the board, but I thought on that, but I think it's our decision. I think it in some ways it kind of clouds issues sometimes when we bring the next, you know, it's the same. I did let. Representative Herrera Butler's office know we were going to be having it there. I, there won't be an opportunity, but again, because it's a. That that almost has a closer connection because it's a, it's federal. There's a federal nexus there. But if they wanted to have somebody there to observe that they, they're, you know, it's public meeting, they could certainly do that, but I think, I think we'll limit it to. The board and then the prosecuting attorney and then the sheriff. If he's able or his designate, who's ever able to be because there's, there's definitely a, there's a law enforcement component, a big component. And so I, that's one thing we do need to kind of talk about is what our format's going to be as far as what. And I I'm hoping that we can have some discussion with the prosecutor in law enforcement. Prior to the, excuse me, the meeting as far as how we want the layout to go. And again, it's going to be a town hall, so I will try to, I'll facilitate the meeting, but it's obviously our other elected officials are going to be participating and.
We have a little bit of time on the agenda for next Tuesday.
Yeah, so if we can have some time, thank you. Any other board pending? Okay, then we'll move on to elected officials. Update prosecuting attorney, Mr. Canal. I see you on Zoom. If you had any anything to discuss with the Board of Commissioners?
I'm going to hold off until next week until we have the full board.
Okay. All right, okay, sounds good. I'm going to take that as good news that there's nothing so critically on fire legally speaking that we have to deal with it.
I can only control what I say, not what people hear.
I'm going to choose to live in that world, especially after listening to Aaron. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other issues then for the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
I will step down a second, that motion. I have a motion a second to adjourn any discussion.
Have a good time at the beach, Dan.
Yeah.
Thanks for calling in.
Hearing none, all is a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Citizen Christopher.